Good afternoon. Mr. Vernon?
Present.
Mr. Rickman?
This meeting is being recorded.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye. Let me hear.
Mr. Davis?
Here. Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Brad McDowell, would you please give us a word?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, let us pray. Oh God, our Father, for this day and for all that you've done for us. For the sunshine that is very apparent in our lives, not only the warm rays of the sunshine, but your goodness and your mercy that shines upon each of us. But we simply ask that you would bless our city, bless those of us who will sit and listen and abide by the will of the people. Lord, we ask that individually and collectively that you would guide us with your presence and with your tenacity as it relates to grace and mercy. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen.
Mayor and council, uh, our next item on the agenda is actually adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor? I move adoption of the, uh, agenda with the following additions under item twenty-six, add city holidays and Booker Washington Heights and add item twenty-nine, uh, employment of an employee under thirty dash four, uh, seventy-eight-two, uh, also.
Uh, so move, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Uh, staying on one with the previous question.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, this motion up for approval of minutes. Um, uh, council's asked to approve the council meeting, uh, minutes from June first, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. We'll move the previous question, Kirk Coprol.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Uh, we have, um, Director Tinsley with us?
Yes, sir.
Harry, we still got COVID on the run?
Yeah, it looks that way, sir. We're trending in a good position.
All right. Uh, no, we, um, some of you may have seen some of the, uh, um, media, uh, earned media, paid media, social media, our team has, has helped us, uh, I think, very creatively to push out in partnership with our, uh, various media entities in, in Columbia. We gotta keep encouraging people to get vaccinated. Uh, we, we got COVID in the run. The way we beat it down and, and, uh, for good is by pushing up our vaccination rates. Um, uh, South Carolina lags a good bit of the country. Um, so that means that, all that means to me is that we got a whole lot of room for improvement. The glass is half-full, not half-empty, uh, but we can get there. Uh, it's gonna take a lot of creative, uh, hard work. So I want to thank all of you, uh, who helped, uh, to keep push and amplify, uh, the message around vaccinations. I'll encourage you to do so and, um, give it forward to Chief Tinsley for an update.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Assistant City Manager Palin. Uh, so just a quick situational update, as I know you're following the numbers, everything as Mayor said, is trending in a good, a good direction, at least over the last eight weeks specifically. Uh, nationally, new cases, hospitalizations and deaths, uh, continue to decline. According to CDC, the vaccine, uh, vaccination utilization rate is eighty-one point eight percent with an average of over one point one million doses administered each day. Also for South Carolina, according to the latest CDC, uh, COVID-nineteen community profile report from June four, June twelfth, area of concern continuum by counties shows all forty-six counties in South Carolina with a low burden and minimal community activity of COVID. Um, forecasting models for the CDC indicate nationally and for South Carolina, over the next four weeks, cases will continue to decrease. Of, uh, of importance, uh, about the vaccination campaign, City of Columbia and DHEC will host a vaccine clinic, uh, this Thursday, June seventeenth, from one PM to four PM. That'll be at the Charles R. Drew Wellness Center located at twenty-one zero one Walker Solomon Way. And DHEC will be administering those vaccines and they will be offering the one-shot J&amp;J Janssen as well as the two-shot, uh, Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. There's no appointments, no insurance and no ID required. Uh, additional information is on our, uh, website and our social media, uh, platforms. As far as some, uh, ethegeneology data, um, the, according to Johns Hopkins, uh, COVID-nineteen dashboard as of today, uh, over three point four million US cases confirmed and we did, unfortunately, cross the milestone of six hundred thousand deaths due to COVID. As far as South Carolina confirmed cases, our case counts stand at four hundred and ninety-two thousand, uh, nine hundred and eighty-five. Uh, as of today's report, there were fifty-three, uh, new confirmed cases statewide and it gives us, uh, the test sampling a two-point-one percent positivity rate. Um, of noting, uh, DHEC did not report, uh, any new or probable deaths as of today, um, but our state total stands at eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three, uh, deaths due to COVID. And as far as, uh, Richland County, our case count stands at thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine. We had three additional cases, uh, as of today's report out, there are five hundred and eight confirmed deaths to date. Also noting, uh, our, uh, over the last fourteen-day reporting period from May thirty-first to June thirteenth, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight cases are reported across Richland County. That's an average of about twenty-one cases per day. Also, as of the June ninth, uh, report, Richland County's fourteen-day recent disease activity infant rate remains low. We did drop below the, uh, fifty, uh, uh, per one-hundred-thousand and our percent positivity rate is two-point-zero. So all three metrics, uh, are indicated as low across the board for that report. Uh, hospitalizations, as I say, continue to decline. Uh, as of today's report, there were one-hundred-and-sixty-three, uh, patients hospitalized due to COVID. As far as the vaccine distributions, our state has received over five million vaccines. They administered over three-point-seven million. And as of the June twelfth report, uh, approximately thirty-nine point five percent of South Carolina's population greater than twelve years of age are fully vaccinated. Uh, forty-six point three percent have received at least one shot. And according to the DHEC dashboard on the vaccination, uh, campaign, Richland County residents, a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-three have received at least one dose. Um, also from a national standpoint, uh, a hundred-and-forty-four point nine million, uh, US citizens have been fully vaccinated. Uh, that's the US population, that's forty-three point seven percent. And then those that are classified over sixty-five, that's seventy-six point four percent have received, uh, vaccinations. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, any questions, uh, for Harry? Okay. No, that, no, thank you, um, Harry. I look forward to your report to keep us completely in the know on all the data that, that, that matters. Um, hopefully we'll, we'll continue to see things getting in the right direction, true north. Um, so, uh, appreciate you both. Appreciate. All right. Um, the, um, so we have, we have a resolution, twenty-twenty-one sixty-nine and, um, second reading, it's twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-one, uh, before us. Uh, to, to folks who don't, who aren't normally, um, participating in, in city council, uh, meetings now, not everyone does this, uh, like, like we do all the time. Um, the, the opportunity for public input is, um, usually at the, uh, closer to the end of the agenda. I do know, um, from our conversation, uh, with our clerk, a number of folks have, um, have, uh, called in and wanna have, uh, some input before we take up, uh, uh, these, uh, two items. Uh, I've, I've shared my, um, my, my thoughts with the clerk that we would not diverge from the agenda, uh, but I, I, I think obviously, you know, a lot of people feel very passionate about this. We got a lot of emails about it, a lot of phone calls about it and, and they could be wise to let people have their say, uh, prior to, uh, council action on the resolution and second reading of, of, of the ordinance. So, Madam Clerk, I apologize. Um, I wanna go ahead and, um, allow folks to have their say here, please. Um, um, I would ask you, obviously, this, uh, this is a free country, um, and, and we encourage you to, to exercise and, and the, and the right to free speech. We also ask you to respect, uh, of the opinions of, of others that you may not, uh, agree with as, as, as well as the respect of, uh, of, uh, council and policymakers who have to make these tough decisions on a regular basis. Uh, your comments are limited to three minutes. That's a real, that's a real three minutes. You have a lot of people in the queue. So, um, um, at very least, let's be respectful of the people who have to follow you. Um, uh, we, we expect this may, this could be a, a fairly long day. And if in fact someone has expressed your view and expressed it very clear, clearly, um, you can obviously defer, uh, to, uh, to their input, uh, as your own. But, uh, Madam Clerk, um, let's, uh, bring folks, uh, in, uh, gonna have them, uh, give their say unless there's some objection from council, which I don't think there is. Uh, let people have their say against three minutes. Um, um, the, the clerk will, will instruct you as to how to, uh, use, uh, the, um, uh, the public input options, uh, on your, on your telephone. And, uh, we look forward to hearing from you. We would ask that you state for the record your name, uh, and your residence. Uh, it's important, obviously, this is important, an issue important to, uh, know everyone everywhere. Uh, but this council represents the people of Columbia. So if you, uh, we want to hear from the citizens of Columbia. Um, so, um, Madam Clerk, show is yours.
Thank you, sir. Again, if you're calling in regarding the items, um, items three and four on the council agenda related to conversion therapy, we will begin adding you to the speaker queue. If you join the speaker queue prematurely, you, um, remain online and you can be added back to the queue later. Thank you.
Yeah, please state your name and residence. Um, and you have three minutes, uh, to share your opinions. I would add too, as people get lined up to get into the queue, this is an opportunity for you to share your opinion. Uh, this is, this is not an opportunity to have a, a back and forth with council. Uh, so I know sometimes people wanna ask questions and, and this is, uh, obviously we've had robust input from citizens, uh, via email, social media, as well as, uh, phone calls. Um, so we wanna hear what you have to, uh, say and what you think. Please unanticipated back and forth, uh, conversation. How we looking, Madam Clerk?
Okay. Caller ending in seven-eight oh-nine, you've, you've been added to the meeting. Okay, thank you. Can you, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Elizabeth N., and I'm here to urge you strongly not to pass the ordinance regarding conversion therapy for minors. As a mom and a faith leader in the community, I appreciate that you are so committed to protecting the physical and psychological well-being of our minors, but this ordinance is not in the best interest of our children. This ordinance limits the rights and freedoms and opens the door for prejudice and the strangulation of freedom of speech and freedom of religion. As we move forward, we must all remember President Reagan's words, "The freedom is a fragile thing and it's never more than one generation from extinction." It is, it is not ours by way of inheritance, but we must, it must be fought for and defended. The freedoms and rights of our licensed providers need to be defended. They have worked diligently to obtain their title and practice in their field and should be trusted within their profession. Each person is a complex individual that requires unique care and what is helpful to one child might be disastrous to another. I have personally witnessed both sides of this care. I have seen firsthand the ramifications of manipulation and abuse on both sides of the coin. Limiting and muzzling only one side of the confusion is biased and detrimental to the children. If the parents of the minors are concerned with the care of the licensed provider, they have the right to seek other counsel. We need to do our part to uphold the Constitution and keep freedom alive. Licensed providers should have the right to speak according to their convictions, just as parents should continue to have the right to take their minors to someone else for care. Thank you for your time and considering my opinion today.
Thank you, Dr. N. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we're adding the next caller now. I apologize, the system's taking a little bit longer today, but speakers are being added as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be speaking yet or not.
I believe you are.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, my name is Terry Roberts. I'm a resident of the city of Columbia, thirty-six Hamptonwood Way. And, um, I am also, uh, pastor of a local church. I want to, uh, say how much I appreciate the mayor and the members of the council for allowing me to speak for these few moments. I am sure that this ordinance, this proposed ordinance is well-intended, but I do have a few concerns about it. First of all, I don't see the word coercive anywhere in the ordinance, which raises the question in my mind, does the ordinance simply prohibit the forced application of conversion therapy? That is, against a minor's will? Or does it also regulate the conversation a counselor can have with their client? I know of two licensed professional counselors who practice in the city of Columbia. Both are personal friends of mine. Both of them approach counseling from a biblical worldview and both have told me they would never apply this so-called conversion therapy against a minor's will. But I'm wondering, what if those counselors see the need to discuss with their client the biblical perspective on gender and sexual orientation? Will this ordinance restrict what a counselor can discuss with their client? So my point is, as written, I believe this ordinance is ambiguous at best, leaving open to misinterpretation and misapplication, uh, the enforcement of the ordinance. My concern is that it will muzzle the helping professionals or at least intimidate them to the point that they would be afraid to help young people who sincerely want and are seeking help. And that could cause as much harm as the so-called conversion therapy. I also wonder how many children in the Columbia area have been harmed by conversion therapy? Do we know of actual cases? And if so, who determined what caused the harm? So basically, I'm asking, are we addressing a problem that might be more imaginary than real or at best, a problem that is merely potential? I am reminded of, uh, the system scientist, Peter Singh, in his highly acclaimed book, The Fifth Discipline. He says, "Today's problems come from yesterday's solutions." In other words, when organizations set out to solve a problem, they often fail to consider all the ramifications of the so-called solution and inadvertently, they create a new problem greater than the one they thought they were solving. And finally, let me just say that as a pastor, I am concerned that this ordinance could be a slippery slope that could lead to a more widespread repression of free speech to the point of even prohibiting pastors, for example, from teaching biblical perspectives on this issue. I know that may seem far-fetched, but I can say that until recently, my counselor friends would have viewed this particular ordinance as far-fetched. And so with all due respect, I strongly urge the council to vote no on ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-one. Thank you so much for your kind attention to my remark.
Thank you. We'll wait for folks to get into the queue, so we'll be patient. Someone in the public input queue?
Dr. Mark Smith?
Wait, hey, Mr. President, um, floor is yours for the next three minutes. Good, sir.
Okay. Uh, first of all, thank you. I've sat in your seat as a councilman and I, or, and I understand the, the important job that you have. Uh, I just wanted to take just a couple of moments and address the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one, uh, legislation proposed, uh, resolution that you have. Uh, a couple of questions that I would bring to you. First of all, at Columbia International University, I've met with all my counselors. I asked the question, do we use, uh, specific conversion therapy counseling? And no one does here. It's not a common practice, which, uh, made me wonder, uh, in this proposed, uh, resolution, whether there is a, a, a real need for it. And as far as the faith community, there are some real questions. So I would just ask you all a couple of questions to consider. First of all, has the council considered the potential impact this has on the clergy in America and, uh, with regard to the religious community in the area? The clarifications carve out possibly, uh, would be a solution to that. And the reason I ask that, I did my own research and there are already in a number of states where this has been passed, there are now lawsuits developing from citizens or even those who have an activist mindset to take on the clergy and put the clergy in a, a specific, uh, disadvantage. And, uh, this is requiring additional, uh, legal counsel for the clergy. It will have a huge effect on the clergy in the meantime, uh, as we go forward. So, uh, I would just ask the council to really look at the possibilities. If you're going to pass it, which I oppose, I would ask that you look at a carve-out, carve-out and clarification on what conversion, what is meant by conversion therapy. Uh, also, uh, as the council gets into this for, for a, really of, of personal freedom and, and, uh, rights, uh, both counselor and patients could be damaged by this resolution. And, uh, so I just have some simple questions on, on that. Have you thought through, uh, one, the constitutionality of, of getting into this whole idea? Uh, and I know there's gonna be court cases, uh, that may end up at the Supreme Court eventually, but the impact, the rights of children, uh, on, 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 uh, the, the personal concerns that are, are held with regard to this scientifically, there's not scientific proof, uh, as to, uh, either side of this issue. Uh, and for us to get involved in, in this and, and into the whole idea of personal rights on clients and, and patients, it really opens a whole can of worms for something that can be very divisive to the city. And I would just ask you as a council to consider this. We need things that unify us right now. We need to focus on jobs. We need to focus on, on housing. We need to focus on, uh, economic development. We need to focus on the poor in the community. And now we have this coming up because I know it's a political football right now for certain organizations. Is that really what we as a council wanna get involved in? Uh, I would just ask you really consider, uh, whether this is important and needed and are there cases that you even know about where this has become an issue? And, and consider all the factors at hand. So in every way possible, I would ask you to consider the things that I've said and others have said. I respect the job you do, but I would ask for your help in unifying us, not dividing us. And this is a very divisive issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. We have the next speaker, Peter.
Yes, sir. Rick, you're in the speaker now. And as we wait, I just wanna let you know that after the speaker, we still have five callers on the line and, uh, we'll move through those as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Caller ending in thirty-nine thirteen, you've been added to the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin, members of council. Thanks so much for allowing us to have input today. My name is Brad Lindsay and I teach Sunday School, uh, downtown at First Prez. Just wanted to thank you all for your work, but I wanted to encourage you, uh, not to forget about those of us who are, uh, persons of strong faith, uh, those of us even who don't work necessarily in a, at, at the church, but those of us who, who our faith cannot be separated from us, uh, no matter what we do, our faith is, is, you know, paramount to us. We can't just turn it on and turn it off. And so I'm speaking up for counselors as well who can't turn their faith off as well as we're commanded to be ambassadors for Christ by Scripture wherever we are. So I would encourage you to, to vote against this resolution and don't forget the faith community here. And again, we, we, we wanna be able to practice religion that we believe that Scripture tells us to practice and the clear teaching of Scripture. So with that, I will, uh, cede the remainder of my time back and thank you all so much for your service.
Thank you so much, uh, for taking the time to make sure we heard your voice.
Okay. Caller ending in one-four-two-four, you now have the floor.
Good afternoon, Major Benjamin and council. My name is Renee Mills. I'm a graduate of Columbia International University and also a minister of the gospel. And I would just like to share briefly with you that the First Amendment states that Congress has, Congress shall make no laws respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. In our society, freedom of religion has been twisted to mean freedom from all religious influence, which is something that the framers of our Constitution never intended. Today, we are asking you to protect the very rights stated in the Declaration of Independence and endowed by our, our Creator, our religious freedom. And so today, we're just gonna ask you that, first of all, to consider that any law that prohibits the free exercise of religion is unconstitutional and should be excluded or tabled. We are asking you not to make it legal for professional counselors to offer treatment to minors that extend beyond the LGBQT plus perspective such as conversion therapy. We're asking you to vote no to this. such as conversion therapy. We're asking you to vote no to this bill. For to counsel or to educate is not the same as indoctrinate. And education always includes all perspectives, but indoctrination is simply one-sided. And prohibiting parents who are Christian, Jewish, or any other faith from exercising their religious freedom and seeking counselors with the same values is unconstitutional. And it also strips them of their parental rights and authority, as well as their religious freedom. And responsibility for training children belongs to the parent. And as parents, let us choose what is best for our children. So parents should have the freedom to decide how best to counsel their children in accordance with their own convictions, their values, and their beliefs, as long as it is legal, moral, and just. So I'm just asking you today that to allow the parents to have their voice and their choice regarding their children and allow the religious community to continue to teach and to preach according to their beliefs and values. And please don't prohibit our free exercise of religion or make laws that will cause conflict that are unnecessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, caller ending in 6748.
Yes, thank you. My name is Dr. Carl Brogie. I serve a large denominational church with campuses in Beaufort, Hilton Head. We have people from Columbia as well that attend our Grandville Aking campuses. And we're all very concerned, the 2,000-plus people I represent, over what the council is doing because of its ramifications across the state. Many follow Columbia as an example. And I'm sure when you opened with the prayer, it was more than just lip service that you meant it. And I appreciate that because we've been prohibited in Beaufort from praying in Jesus's name at our council meetings. So we wonder where all this goes. But I think if you take all the air out of the balloon, bottom line, it's a clash of worldviews. Either the Bible is true or it's not. And it speaks against transgender behavior. It speaks against homosexual behavior. I know in the culture we live in, people want to make this a minority status issue. If I was African-American or Hispanic, I would be outraged. Because this is not a minority status issue. This is an issue of morality. And I know some of you that I've spoken with, you said, well, that's your interpretation of the Bible. I don't think so. It's been the interpretation for some 2,000 years of both Jewish and Christian people. And the Scripture is clear. And I would be afraid as a councilman to vote against God in His word to prevent Christians, counselors, psychiatrists, pastors, and it will be pastors. I counsel people all the time. And so if a 12-year-old boy comes into my office because he has thoughts being implanted in his head in the Beaufort public school system that transgenderism is an option, and maybe he's really a girl, I'm going to tell him, no, you're not a girl. You're a boy. That's how God created you. But the Scripture warns, "Who are those who substitute good for evil, evil for good?" Who call black, white, white, black, sweet, bitter, bittersweet? Where you call a boy a girl, a girl a boy? You are going against the clear teaching of Scripture. And our mandate is to tell people the truth. So I hope you'll consider this because you're not really opposing pastors and the people that you represent. You're opposing the living God. And I think that's the bottom line. Thank you for taking my call and listening.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor. As we're queuing up speakers, additional individuals are calling in. Wanted to bring that to your attention. As of now, we have the current caller and five additional callers in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Welcome. Okay, caller ending in 4344.
Hello. Hi, everyone. My name is Debbie Cloninger. And I thank you for taking this call and for the work that you do. All the speakers prior to this have definitely have spoken things that I was going to speak about. I do ask that you consider everything that you have already heard. Particularly, I was going to make note of the prayer, the beautiful prayer that began your session. And thank you for that prayer. One other point that I wanted to make is the fact that our founding fathers were very wise men when they penned the Declaration of Independence. And they did that with us in mind, our children, and all of us, that we definitely are created equal. And we have unalienable rights that, and among these rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And if our children are unhappy and you are taking away our liberty as parents to get them qualified Christian counseling, this is something that is a clear violation of the Declaration of Independence. And also, our knowledge of the Bible and who God is and how He created us. And we do ask, I ask that, as I know that you believe in God, that this ordinance takes away parents' ability and freedom to get help for their children. I ask that you do vote no against this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of Columbia City Council, thank you for hearing the concerns of so many. My name is Mitch Prosser, and I represent concerned citizens across the state, including there in Columbia and Richland County. And I thank you for hearing those who have already spoken. They have spoken truth, and I am grateful for the words that they have spoken. I raised three points of concern in regard to this ordinance and the resolution at hand. The first has been so wonderfully articulated by the previous callers in regards to religious freedom and the rights of parents and children. And as has already been said, our immutable characteristics as human beings. I think it's important for us to understand that faith is something that cannot be separated from who we are as individuals. Thus, if a parent, a child, or even a licensed counselor, a pastor, believes in the Word of God, those beliefs cannot be separated from who that person is. I also think about the concerns from a legal standpoint and the legal ramifications of this. I think not only should we be concerned about the rights of the parents and the children when it comes to free speech and the exercise thereof, but also in regard to those medical professionals and those licensed medical professionals. And the idea that we would be restricting the right to speech protected by the Constitution is greatly concerning and falls far beyond the jurisdiction of any local municipality. That's a federal issue. And so there may be a little bit of encroachment or overreach on this particular issue, but that's left for you to decide. I think the other standpoint that I'd like to raise or question possibly that I'd like to ask is, is the City of Columbia essentially saying that they are closed, the city is closed, to businesses or counseling practices that are licensed by the state and by particular organizations? Is the city closed to those organizations, thus effectively shutting down businesses in a time where so many are struggling for jobs and that sort of thing? Are we saying that the lady who, or the gentleman who works at this place will no longer have a job if these licensed counselors who would fall under this ordinance come into question as a result of the ordinance or the resolution at hand? Just a few thoughts and questions to consider moving forward. And I strongly urge you to reconsider the passage of this resolution and ordinance. Please, 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 consider the citizens of Columbia and what is going on here in our city and state. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. Yes, ma'am. We can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Carolyn T. B. I'm a retired high school biology teacher. And I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. You know, America is a unique nation. It's a melting pot of people from many different countries. And it's made up of various cultures, religions, races, who come from other countries here in the pursuit of freedom and a better life. Our ancestors and forefathers paid an incredible price, some of them their lives, to give us this freedom. And they established a constitution that protects our rights and freedom. The First Amendment guarantees freedom concerning religion, expression, assembly, and the right to petition. It forbids Congress from both promoting one religion over others and also restricting an individual's religious practices. It guarantees freedom of expression by prohibiting Congress from restricting the press or the rights of individuals to speak. We also have the freedom and responsibility to raise our children to become responsible adults. We are given the liberty to teach them our belief system and raise them with our values. The brain and its functions do not fully develop until a child is in his or her mid-20s, actually around the age of 25. Therefore, their ability to think, reason, and make responsible decisions is not fully developed until early adulthood. The parent's obligation is to help them mature and learn how to make responsible decisions. But often, the parents have to make decisions for them. If their child is struggling with identity issues and the parents feel they need some help in that area, they have the freedom to get them the help they feel is appropriate for their child. They know their children better than anyone else. That is why I do not understand this bill, which is stating that it's illegal for a parent to send their child to a counselor of their choice. This is a violation of the First Amendment. I urge the council to vote against this bill. Thank you for hearing my voice.
Thank you for sharing your voice.
We have three callers remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, caller ending. Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Is it me? 4457?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Benjamin, City Council. My friend, Pastor McDowell, my name is Pastor Trevy Capers. I serve as senior pastor of the Zion Benevolent Baptist Church in Hopkins, South Carolina, and on the faculty and staff at Columbia International University as the Associate Dean of Spiritual Formation. And I echo very similar sentiments of those that spoke before me. And our concerns are nearly unanimous in the scope of this ordinance. And we urge City Council to oppose this measure. I could go through the attacks that we feel that it is on religious freedom. And I'll speak not just as a pastor or a seminarian, but I speak as a Christian, that we feel as if our ability to practice those things which we believe will be restricted in part by this ordinance. And one of the many things that we do in our discipline and exercise of our faith is counsel. We feel that also this ordinance might leave the door wide open for escalation and other matters pertinent to the cause might prohibit us from exercising our faith in a manner in which the Constitution allows. I echo the sentiment of our president, Dr. Mark Smith. There may be legal ramifications on the backside of this that we'd like for the council to consider. And also, to take a more detailed look into the precedence for an ordinance like this. Again, I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. God bless you for what you do for our city. And we pray again that you would oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Capers.
Okay, caller ending in 8746.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin and member of council. I am Tiffanye James, and I will be reading a letter sent from the South Carolina chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Columbia City Council members, the South Carolina chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics is in support of the City of Columbia's proposed conversion therapy ban. Policies and position statements from reputable medical associations opposing conversion therapy are here, including American Academy of Pediatrics, American Medical Association, and the American Psychiatric Association. The concept... Sorry, give me one second. The concept of conversion therapy is based on misconceptions that homosexuality is a mental disorder and that sexual orientation or gender identity can be changed. The Trevor Project released its national survey on LGBTQ youth mental health 2021 on May 20, 2021. And unfortunately, the survey found that 30% of LGBTQ youth reported being subjected to conversion therapy, with 83% reporting this occurring when they were under 18 years old. Conversion therapy is based on false premises and in fact known to be harmful. And unfortunately, we have seen the effects of this in our practice. Dr. James Stalworth quotes, "As a longstanding board-certified academic pediatrician in Columbia, I will join with the American Academy of Pediatrics in opposing conversion therapy for one of our most vulnerable patient populations." To be more specific, this issue should not be a political hot potato, but rather, it is a medical issue fundamental to the doctor-patient relationship." End quote. Dr. Duncan Norton quotes, "I am an academic, board-certified pediatrician who practices evidence-based medicine to provide the absolute best care to children in the Midland. Conversion therapy has been found to be scientifically unbeneficial and to cause longer-term mental adverse effects, such as suicide being one of those. The use of conversion therapy is also found to be against the ethical principles of medicine. I applaud the members of Columbia City Council for moving forward to ban this harmful practice," end quote. Dr. Heather Staples quotes, "As a board-certified academic pediatric preliminary physician..." Dr. Heather Staples quotes, "As a board-certified academic pediatric preliminary physician and parent of an LGBTQIA+ teenager, I stand in support of the AAP's position to conversion therapy. We know this to be a harmful practice, which is not based on any medical evidence and is opposed by numerous medical societies." End quote. Past president of SC AAP, Dr. Debbie Greenhouse quotes, "As a board-certified Columbia pediatrician with twenty-five-plus years' experience, I have cared for many LGBTQ patients. These patients face numerous barriers in our community daily. They need support from their physicians and from mental health professionals who will care for them. Conversion therapy has been shown not to be helpful for LGBTQ youth and has been shown to do harm. It has no place in Columbia, South Carolina." End quote. Our SC AAP Secretary Treasurer, Treasurer, Dr. Martha Edwards, board-certified pediatrician and a member of the SC American Academy of Pediatrics Executive Committee, I seek to advise families about best practices surrounding children's mental and physical health. We know that conversion therapy is not only... is not only ineffective for LGBTQ youth, it results in long-term harm to children who are exposed to it. Conversion therapy should be banned as a treatment option in order to protect our most precious resources, our children. The pandemic had laid bare the inequities, the inequities in our society and our LGBTQ youth have struggled disproportionately during this time as well. We are grateful for all you do for our children. Respectfully, Robert Saul, M.D., pediatrician and medical geneticist, Greenville, South Carolina, President SC AAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Now, Mayor, we're adding the last caller to the queue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
It's noon. You're on.
Okay. Uh, this is Dylan Guttles. I'm the founder and equity designer at the Agape Table. You've heard from me plenty regarding this ordinance. However, I just jumped out of line to board my flight in the Arizona airport because I could not continue to sit here and just listen to what has been said. I'm very thankful that I'm the last caller so that hopefully we can rein this conversation in. Let's be clear about what's happened today. The religious right has yet again hijacked this conversation to make this ordinance about what it is not about. This ordinance, the way that it is written, is about licensed practicing officials. It is not about religious institutions necessarily, nor is it about pastors. If those individuals are licensed and practicing, then certainly it would apply. But nine times out of ten, those who are still committing conversion therapy are not licensed and practicing. Those are the ones that were, uh, practicing that when I went through it myself. But to answer the questions of those who have asked, is there any data to support this evidence? Are there any people in the Columbia city limits who have actually gone through this? Well, if I'm the only one that's able to stand up and say, yes, I have been, then I'll be that one. Did go through it when I was fifteen years old and I'm still dealing with the ramifications of that trauma. At fifteen years old, I went through conversion therapy as it stood and that those practices of conversion therapy continued when I went to college. Ironically, to a Baptist college to study theology, because even though I was wrestling with my sexuality, I still knew that I was deeply loved by my God and I still knew that I was called to some form of ministry. And yet those conversion therapy practices continued while I was in college. I have my therapy appointment next week and you best believe at twenty-eight years old that that will still be a topic of discussion. Be it known that many of us can't come forward and talk about it this way. Be it known that many of us are not able to come forward this way, but be it known that this is really happening. And so I just want to urge the council today to look at the facts. To look at the way that this ordinance was written and what this ordinance is actually set to, uh, accomplish. The religious right has yet again hijacked this conversation to talk about what this is not. This ordinance is about protecting our LGBTQ youth from dangerous practices that have been proven time and time again by scientists, doctors, pediatricians, psychiatrists, and beyond, that this is a harmful practice. If we want to talk about religious liberties and those rights, we can have that conversation later. I'd be happy to have any of you at the Agape Table to join me and learn how your push for religious right kept me away from my loving God and it kept me away from the church for a very long time. But I'm very proud to say that I am in a loving, monogamous relationship with my partner and I'm deeply loved by my Jesus and I deeply love Jesus too. Counsel, I urge you to remember what this ordinance is really about, what this ordinance really does, and what this conversation really is. Thank you so much.
Thank you and thank you for, for sharing, uh, the ups and downs, joys and pains, uh, in your faith journey. Um, Madam Clerk, are, are we sure that the lines are, are, are clear? Is anyone else signed up to, to, to speak on the energy for us?
We have had, uh, four additional individuals to call in, Mayor.
Let's, let's, let's hear them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, you're, you're on. Got the floor for the next three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Benj- oh, thank you, Mayor Benjamin, I appreciate that. Uh, uh, first of all, before I start, I do want to thank you guys for having this hearing and allowing, um, a very open hearing and allowing the people of Columbia to speak. And second of all, I want to give some special kudos to Councilwoman, um, Tamika Devine. She and I have had an email dialogue and I commend her for her professionalism and being open to discuss this. And I, I think that's just wonderful, uh, for a community relationship. I think also those of you, I know Mayor Benjamin, I think you received a document from Liberty Council outlining similar legislation in the state of Florida and them outlining their opinion. If you did not receive that or if those of you on the council want to see it, yeah, we'll be happy to share that with you. Uh, but I'd like to ask a couple of questions for you to consider that I shared, uh, with Ms. Devine that I, I think are important in terms of perspective. And that, that relates to choice. There are those that may embrace this, uh, these concepts and want to stay in that concept. But then there are also those that want to be out, uh, and want to find a way out. Uh, and I would ask this, you know, these questions. Is there any room in your mind to perceive that those trying to help someone with more information or share Christian perspectives on their choices is actually pr- practicing enlightenment therapy or even corrective therapy, once that individual has expressed a desire for help? How can the law take away such a request away from that person seeking help and guidance? And where are their constitutional rights to pursue their life, liberty, and happiness from that point forward if they've expressed a desire for help exiting the LGBTQ community or those concepts? Secondly, I would ask this. If conversion therapy is wrong for Christians and/or other counselors to help those wanting to obtain more truth and guidance out of the LGBT community or from those concepts, is it also equally wrong for the LGBTQ community to try their form of therapy on young, impressionable minds to introduce them? As the biology teacher stated earlier, in a developing mind to LGBTQ concepts, sometimes even against their parents' wishes or without their parents' knowledge and even using taxpayer dollars without a community consensus to endorse that? I think if, my grandmother used to say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if we're going to limit what one perspective wants to try to do to influence the young minds into their ideas, shouldn't your position be to limit all of it? Because we do want to avoid any harm for those that stated it's very traumatic for them to have conversion therapy tried on them. I, I empathize with them. I pray that they would find the help and the guidance that they need. I think we all do. We all want what's best in terms of feeling. But for anyone to say that once someone has embraced this, they can't go forward and seek help, that should be wrong. That's my input. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
The council, my name is Doug King, K-I-N-G, and I live in the city of Columbia. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to everyone on this virtual meeting. It's the first time I've ever called in. This way I have attended meetings in person in the past when you, when you had them. Uh, and I participated in Zoom meetings, so I know basically how this works, even though this is just audio portion. Uh, I'm not calling to, uh, talk anything about what has been talked about for the last twenty or thirty minutes. I'm talking about a entirely different issue that I hope the City Council can help me with or point me to the right place. I have been, and I'll ask a question and maybe that will, uh, I wanted to say more. Does this City Council have any influence over the, uh, Columbia Water Department?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, and if you, uh, if I give you my email address, will you send me that email directly? And I'll make sure we get the, uh, I see Mr. Shealy, his picture's smiling right there. And I'm sure he's smiling behind the picture right now. We can get you a quick response to your issue. We want to make sure this, this is discussion for us.
I, I would appreciate, Stu, if you interrupt me, I would appreciate it very much because, uh, and I'm going to say this to the council, because maybe it'll get some attention, that I think the thousands of people in the city of Columbia would feel the same way. Dealing with the water department is the most frustrating bureaucracy I have dealt with in years. Am I still on?
Yes, we haven't cut, or we haven't cut you off though.
Okay, it, it's, it, I'm sorry, it's the lag between what I'm seeing on the screen and, and I see your lip is moving, but I can't hear anything and I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all I want...
Please, go ahead.
Could I just say this though? This is a suggestion. Uh, I have an issue that I'm dealing with and if you give me an email address, I'll be glad to do it that way. But in general, there is almost no way to communicate properly to the water department. And that's what I think you could help with.
Okay, there, there, there are a few different...
I see you smiling, but I ca- I can't hear anything, sorry.
Okay, well, um, maybe I'm on lag as well. Can you hear me now?
Well, what I'm, I'm looking at, I see, uh, i- it's, it's a lag in all of this. I see you speaking and then I see after that, I see script at the bottom, but I'm muted. Uh, I'm sorry, it's just really the way these virtual meetings can work. Uh, so I apologize if I'm speaking over you.
Um, uh, Erica, if you wouldn't mind, uh, maybe getting his contact information and getting that to me and, and primarily Mr. Shealy and getting a quick response, uh, back to his specific request?
Yes, sir, we will give him a call.
All right, please, please do that. Let's put a bow on that real quick. Thank you. Very much.
Okay, we are adding the last caller to the speaker queue.
You said that li- you said that like...
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we sure can, please. Like, microphone's yours.
Great, well, uh, thank you, Mayor Benjamin and to the rest of City Council. Hi, uh, my name is Jess McCray. I'm from South Carolina. So, many times I've been here and I am here because I could not stand silent listening to, uh, this meeting and listening to the hate in so many hearts here uh, from residents in Columbia and residents outside of our state. Uh, I'm calling for the ban against conversion therapy. Um, I see you talking and I'm, I'm scared you may not hear me.
We, we can't, we hear you, Jess. We hear you.
Okay, cool. I am calling for the ban against conversion therapy. Um, I believe that we do have a freedom of religion, but that also means we have freedom from religion. Freedom from the ideas of others and the practices from which they believe in. My right to choose should not infringe on others' rights to choose. But we should not allow our religion into our laws or policies because like the founding documents were referenced prior, um, there is a, a separate church and state. That was what our founding fathers intended. Conversion therapy has been proven not to work. Multiple scientific studies and organizations have come out against this for years, including the American Academy of Child Adolescent Psychiatry, the American College of Physicians, and more. It kills our children. Uh, conversion therapy victims are nine times more likely to report having attempted suicide. Just that data alone shakes me to the core and should shake everyone here to the core. Our children here in Columbia and across our state deserve to flourish fully as whoever they are, whoever they choose to be and live to be. We want to see them live as themselves. Our beliefs should not impede on someone's ability to be who they are, including our children. So I encourage our city, I encourage our mayor and the City Council to be bold, to be leaders in our state, as you guys have proven to be countless times, and defend our LGBTQ, LGBTQ community this Pride Month and pass this ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. All right.
There are no more callers, you mayor.
All right, thank you and, and thank you, I know, uh, Councilwoman. Mutual assent, uh, agreed to, to go out of order just to make sure we heard from citizens and other interested parties on these, um, these important issues. So thank you, everyone, for your patience, as well as others who have, um, issues that need to be resolved. Um, so, um, uh, thank you. All right, um, we've got, um, item, uh, three, uh, Mr. Assistant State Manager.
Yes, sir. Uh, so the item number three, uh, Resolution Number R twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six-nine, supporting statewide legislation prohibiting the use of conversion therapy on minors.
And, um, I'll make the motion for approval of this. I asked for this resolution to be, to be drafted. Um, though, so many folks who've, uh, who've been waiting for a resolution of, of, of this ordinance, um, discussion, it's been before us for several weeks now. Uh, I've shared with the, with you, been very transparent about, um, some of my concerns are, are, around, around the ordinances. I've shared with all my council members. Uh, uh, but, but I've not, um, wavered one bit in the sentiment, um, uh, against, uh, conversion therapy. Uh, um, felt it was more appropriate to address it as a, as a resolution expressing the concerns very clear and, uh, concerns of City Council, language mirrors, uh, much of what's in the ordinance, um, but also calls on the state, uh, as we have, uh, many times on, on many different issues of importance, uh, to take action. Um, so I asked for this resolution. Um, uh, and, um, would appreciate a second.
I'll second.
All right, discussion of the resolution. Uh, Mr. Rickman.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I'm planning to vote no on both the resolution and the ordinance. After a great deal of time talking to folks on both sides and families who actually have been affected on both sides of the issue, I believe this is the family choice and we need to allow the families to make those decisions. Um, there's cases study on both sides and we can go back and forth, but the reality is this is a family decision. So I'm going to vote no and I just wanted to make sure that, that my voice was heard.
Thank you, Mr. Rickman. All right, other comments on the resolution? Counsel? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just say, I, 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 um, support your, the resolution and I thank you for bringing that. I think, um, as we know with the mask ordinance and, and lots of other things, there are things that we can do in Columbia, um, but certainly we need, um, our state, uh, to do some things. And I think asking our legislature to take this, uh, um, is, is important and I will support this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Funn. All right, I can't tell if your fingers, Davis, over here, if he was wagging it.
No, it's, uh...
Please.
Wag it out. Now, I, um, I tell you, I, like most of you, I'm, I'm sure have, uh, entertained, um, some discussions with, uh, with individuals on both sides of the issue. with individuals on both sides of the issue. I know I have from Beaufort to Charleston to California, all over the country. But I was just trying to position myself and also take it into account, you know, the teachings of my father. My dad was a minister also, so forth and so on. And in terms of where the city is with this, in terms of, I think jurisdiction as well as having the ability to, to, to affect either legislation or ordinances that have teeth in it. I've, I've also kind of surprised at some of the comments and how they were being brought forth. I would, I would be in favor of the resolution, which really would be most appropriate, given, I think, again, the separation of local ordinances versus state legislation.
I moved the previous question, excuse me. I was just getting ready to do that.
What was the previous question, Kirk Corral?
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Yes.
Ms. Devine.
Hi.
Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, second reading of ordinance number 2021-021, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 14, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 5, offenses involving minors to add Division 4 conversion therapy to minors prohibited. First reading approval was given on May 4th.
Mr. Mayor, I move second reading and I have an amendment to the proposed ordinance.
Please, you, you want to make your amendment first, Mr. Duval?
You want to get a second to the motion?
Okay.
I believe, I believe you take the amendments first and then.
Yeah.
Okay. The amendment has been sent to council members this afternoon. It's the PDF that Jack sent us earlier today. I will read you what the, the amendment does, it's not, not long. Under prohibited practices, we are adding after the word provider comma, who is licensed by the city to engage in business, and we are deleting after city limits if the provider receives compensation in exchange for such services. Under sexual orientation, we are deleting the preference or practice of. And in section 14-172, we are adding after conduct by providers who are licensed by the city to engage in business and in a manner in which providers deliver and deleting is delivered. And at the last sentence, including in their form, in manners, in forms other than conversion therapy. And I'll move the adoption of the amendment.
And I will accept that amendment with a second.
How do you understand the, the, the practical effect of the amendments? Jack's maybe on as well, the way of privilege, I'm not sure.
I think they're minor word changes that were suggested to the committee that will clarify the intent of the ordinance, which I would like to discuss after you have heard the motion.
I'm sorry, I'm reading them again, I know we just got.
Mr. Mayor, the, under the prohibited practice thing, the, the intent there was to prevent a pro bono, a licensed person from using a pro bono counseling session. On the sex, on the sexual orientation, it just clarified the language, deleting the preference or practice of. And then again, in the intent, we're talking about people that are licensed by the city of Columbia to engage in business.
All right, and Ms. Knox, Ms. Avadechuk, were we missing something else in, in the amendments?
No, these were amendments sent to us by council members after the committee meeting. These weren't full amendments, so they were.
Okay, not legal amendments, but practical effects, I was asking about. That was a question, I apologize. Was there any practical effect?
No, just, just how, how council member Duval explained, they were just practical effects that they got recommendations from some of the people in the committee meetings.
All right, all right. There was a, there was a motion on the, I assume it's, it was amendment with, the amendment and the ordinance. We're now in discussion period of, of the, of the ordinance. Opportunity for comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duval.
Mr. Mayor, we, we have dealt with this issue now for about six weeks and all of us are probably very attuned to all the nuances of the argument. I would like to say that the majority of the people that called in this afternoon and the majority of the people that I have talked to and emailed with over the last six weeks do not understand what's in this ordinance and I doubt if many of them have read it. There is no word in this ordinance that deals with religion. It does nothing to restrict a pastor's pastoral duties. It is clearly aimed at licensed practitioners. Many, most of pastors in the state of South Carolina are not licensed practitioners licensed by the state of South Carolina. As, has been stated by several people that did call in, the practice of conversion therapy has been shown to be a terrible practice on young adults. All of the major organizations that license practitioners, whether they're psychiatrists or philosophers or counselors or whatever, have shown that conversion therapy does not work and, and it has a lasting impact on the individuals that go through it, as witnessed by Dylan Cullen when he called in a few minutes ago with a very impassioned defense of this ordinance. I know that we are probably in uncharted territory as far as whether or not the city of Columbia has the authority to pass this. But as you heard last week when we talked about Williams versus Hilton Head, this is a home rule state and we have the authority to do what the state legislature has not told us not to do. And in my opinion, the state legislature has left this area of regulation on this specific topic up to the, the members of city council. I voted for the resolution because number one, I expect this ordinance to be challenged. And if it is challenged, number two, the resolution stands as a statement of our, our preference. But I think we need to do both. We need to have the resolution, we need to have the ordinance to support our belief, as stated in the resolution, that the conversion therapy is a terrible practice on young adults that have bad effect on the young adults of the city of Columbia. And you, you have to admit that 90% of the people that have contacted us over the last six weeks have not lived in the city of Columbia.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Reverend McDowell.
Howard, what your, your amendment deletes a part of the original item number four? You're deleting a part.
Well, it, it deletes sums and adds other words. It's, it's the PDF that Jack sent, sent us at one o'clock this afternoon. It, it's just clarifying language, Ed. It's nothing substantive in it that I can see, but it, it does delete some words, but it adds a few words to, to make it clearer as the intent of the ordinance.
So your amendment then is to modify the original 21-21?
Yeah, it, it modifies that if the amendment is adopted.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if that's the case, then the amendment becomes the original, the original, the original motion. And is it now that we are to vote on the amendment modified?
If, with, with, with Mr. Duval's motion, yes, yes, sir, it would be the amended ordinance. It's a new language. And it's, it's a few different sentences, but oftentimes the devil's in the details, as you well know. That's why I had the questions of legal counsel. Any other comments, Ms. Devine, you're muted.
Yes, I just wasn't sure, Reverend McDowell, were you finished or?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody who has called in, emailed. I know that this is a very hot contentious issue and I will tell you that the vast majority of emails that I've received from folks have been respectful. I think the caller who called in, don't think he said his name on here, but it's Rex. He and I have been emailing today and, and I think we disagree on some things, but I, I think that he has been very respectful as has several other people and so I appreciate that. I will have to say I've had some calls to my office that have not been respectful and, and honestly quite damn insulting to my staff who are law firm staff and not city staff and regardless of whose staff and regardless if they were speaking to me, were not the words and actions of people that I would consider are acting in a Christian-like manner. And I think that's unfortunate. I, I think we can all be passionate and, and have a position without disrespecting other people. So I, I did want to say that. I do agree with Mr. Duval that I think there are some people and, and from my conversations with a lot of people, and I answered a lot of calls over the last couple of days and I emailed back with people. There are several people, a lot of people who have not read the ordinance. They've gone on talking points that someone has sent them to contact us on and it, it, it is not exact, is not what the ordinance says. And so I would encourage people on, on whatever, regardless of what, if you support it or don't, read the ordinance and understand what you are commenting on first because I do think that some of the things that have been raised as issues are not an issue in this ordinance. I will say that as an attorney who does mental health work here in Richland County, here in the city of Columbia, I know in a previous time we were talking and I, I gave an example of a client that I had and that question was, had that person gone through conversion therapy? That person had not gone through it, but it made me think and ask. And so I have reached out and talked to the folks at Mercy and some of the mental health and psychiatrist professionals that I deal with on a daily basis. And I will tell you that I have found no licensed psychiatrist, psychologist here in Columbia, as, as Dr. Smith said, with his counselors at CIU, that actually do this. And, and I do think that that is part of the issue, that people that take an oath to do no harm and certainly have strong faith and understand what their faith is, also know that the harm that has been done by conversion therapy methods have, have been documented. But there has not been anything that, that proves that this therapy does what it purports to say it does. And so I, I think that that is something that our council does have in front of us. I've had, heard people talk about parental freedom and et cetera and someone, you know, basically accused me of never not having children and I actually probably have the most children on, on this council. And, and I explained to them that, you know, the law also prohibits you from using corporal punishment on your children. So there is where areas where the law does step in to protect our citizenry. And, and so I, I think that this is a very important point and distinction. There are so many loving parents out there that just want to understand and of course help their, help their children. And I do think as someone who consults with my pastor on a regular basis about things, there's nothing that prohibits you from talking to your pastor about what your family is doing. And so I, I think that as Dylan mentioned, you know, there's been a lot of, of side checking on what issues appear and that's not what's before this council. I will just conclude by saying that, you know, this is happening in the city of Columbia. I know Dr. Smith mentioned, you know, is this really something that's happening? And we, we heard from, I think, Mr. Roberts who called earlier, said he knew two licensed counselors in the city of Columbia and he even prefaced his statement by saying, who said that they wouldn't do this therapy on a child who didn't want it? So I do think that there's, there's a lot of, of, a lot of talk about religious freedoms and being able to provide this. But I will tell you, when you talk to the professionals who understand this therapy and have seen it, you talk to people like Dylan who has been through it, that I have talked to as well. I think our position and, and our, our point here is clear is just to make sure that in the city of Columbia, people who are licensed to do business here in the city of Columbia, don't do something that is harmful. But I do want to say I thank everybody who has contacted us because I know everybody's busy and I know this is a passionate issue. And I think that we, I don't feel like it is at the point where we can't have a conversation about issues on both sides and not be disrespectful to others. So I will be, I supported the resolution because I think that we need to move forward with the state as well. But I support the ordinance because I think here in the city of Columbia, we have been the leader on many issues and we will continue to be the leader. And I think that this is, this is an area where we really need to lead to make sure that, that our young people are not being harmed by a practice that, and I'll just elevate Mercy has sent us a letter, the American Academy of Pediatrics, South Carolina chapter has sent us a letter. I think Ms. James read that. Also, Dr. Deborah Greenhouse has sent us a letter and she's a past president of that South Carolina chapter, but she's very well respected here in Columbia and, and speaking to all of these as well as other mental health professionals. I do believe that this ordinance should be supported.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McDowell and Mr. Davis.
Yes, are we taking a vote because I think everybody has sort of indicated where they are? We still have a motion and a min, this motion on the table. And I think that's where we are right now. If we were to take a vote, and I think most, most everyone who has discussed this issue has even said, yes, I'm going to support it, I'm not going to support it. I cannot in good faith support item number four since we're doing a roundtable.
Yeah, only Mr. Davis has spoken on the order sheet, Mr. McDowell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just, you know, we, as, as a council, I think we bring, we bring baggage to the, to the profession of service. And I, as far as the ordinance is concerned, given the, the explanation that Howard has put, put forth, I, I think it's, it's doable. And I reflect on, you know, personal experiences with, with people I know and also with the people who are passionate about the intent of, of our ordinance versus speculations and mistruths about, about people in general. So I, I think with, with that. So I I think with with that and where we say we are going with the ordinance, I would not have a problem with the fact that the, I think, one thing, one part of the foundation here is the resolution makes it clear of where we stand as a as a local body. However, the the challenges and the intent are not, they're not secretive, they're not going away. And that, I think, puts us in a better position of standing where we are when it comes to our friends on the state level. You know, this is not a, it's not a basketball, it's not a football. You can't pass it on. You know, you got to get a hold of this, take it across the goal line yourself. And the people who are testimonial in their experiences are the folks that that I pay more attention to. So the the ordinance may be misunderstood because I think some folks and everybody's, those who are opposed to it, I I don't think that they, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation, are not paying attention to the experiences of the people who are passionate about this in its entirety. And in all respect to the mayor, I'm going to be quiet. And I'm 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 sure that my position is very clear on this. Don't have a problem with it, as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I moved the previous question on the amendment to the ordinance.
This is on the amended version as Mr. McDowell indicated with the previous question. Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
No.
Mr. McDowell?
No.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
I know I saved my comments to last, to have the 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 last word on this. And 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 Mr. Parliamentarian, I know the I know the rules. Yeah, we got, we got, we got too many trained parliamentarians on city council. I um, I I know that we, and I just want to say this, and I'm I am going to cast a ballot. We don't have rules that allow for abstentions in lieu of a conflict of interest. So I won't be abstaining on this issue. And this is a tough one, and and one of the reasons why I authored the the resolution beforehand, although it's important that we strongly express the sentiments of 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 council on the issue of of conversion therapy. The resolution does that clearly. I've been quite transparent with a number of proponents and and opponents of the ordinance and all of my fellow members of council on on some of the concerns that I've had regarding the 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 ordinance. And and those have not abated. It's rare, as you all know, you've gotten to know me the last eleven plus, eleven years or so. I'm not afraid of a of a tough fight. I'm not afraid, as Ms. Devine stated, Mr. Duval, and leading the way, as I think oftentimes we are the only place in the state that's oftentimes bold enough to do so. I do believe that it is important that we pass laws and policies that protect everyone's dignity. I I also, I've also been around long enough to know that two people can look at the same issue and see it very differently. That oftentimes our faith does define us, even if that issue is not before us. And I and I would I would caution all of us who feel very passionate about about this issue and other issues that will come up at least over the next six months. And then after that, as some of us go back to a private life as private citizens, to not always believe that just because someone sees the world differently, because they act differently, because they talk differently, that indeed we still can't agree on on so many items. It it troubles my soul to see us disagreeing so vehemently. I do want to, although I disagreed with some of the comments made earlier, I I I do want to tell everyone that I've communicated with today and before this that I really appreciate the way that these different views have been articulated. I do believe on this very specific issue that the resolution is the more appropriate way for the city to advance it. My vote is not as important right now. The the ordinance has the majority votes it needs to pass. I was not looking forward to being in the unenviable position of being the 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 deciding vote. And thank my colleagues for for their hard decisions that that each and every one of them had to make. I love my friends. I love the fact that Columbia has led on all issues of 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 justice and and equality and and equity, that we've been strong supporters of of our LGBTQI community. I I'm not convinced that this ordinance is 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 the is the right step to take. Right now, I, the resolution speaks for itself. I think aggressively expresses the desires of council. And if anyone goes up to the State House to lobby the legislature, which is never fun, I've done it for many years, I'd be happy to go and lobby for state action along with you. I will vote in the next. Thank you, Ms. Castle.
Which way did you vote, Mayor?
I think it means I voted no. Item number five.
Okay. Item five, update from Dominion Energy on tree trimming practices. We have Mr. Roy Shannon, manager for electrical operations, and Mr. Brett Wilkins, vegetation management supervisor for Dominion Energy. And I want to thank both of them for being patient today, and I am hoping they are still here.
Yes, we are still here.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is John Cadena. I'm on as well. I'm going to try and share my screen, if that's okay, better presentation.
John, can I say, before you guys get started, just so Royce can address this in the presentation as well? I was at a neighborhood meeting on Sunday, and this wasn't about tree trimming, but about some kind of maybe pesticide that was sprayed in on limbs in people's backyards. So can you guys address that as well, if you weren't planning to, if you could add that? I would appreciate it.
Okay, and that was going to be part of the presentation, so hopefully, hopefully I can do this. This is what happened. And you leave a fifty-five-year-old building person in your presentation. If if, Royce, if you could go it up on the screen.
All right, John, I'm not going to be able to pull it up from how I'm working.
Okay, do you all need for us to pull the presentation up on our end?
If that would be possible.
That would be very helpful.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and start with your precursor information, we'll get the presentation put up on the screen.
Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
I'm Royce Shannon. I'm the operations manager for Columbia. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to present our vegetative management process. I apologize for our technology problems. Hopefully you'll be able to follow along. And if not, hopefully my description will help to understand exactly what we want to present. So one of the first questions that we had was why we trim. Well, that ties directly into our priorities as a company. And our number one priority is safety. The safety of our customers, the safety of our employers, employees, and the safety of the public. Our maintenance programs, including our vegetative management, is part of what helps us to run a safe electric distribution system. Another priority is reliability and the resiliency of our system, and that ties directly to customer service. That reliability is directly affected by our maintenance program, which includes our vegetative management. Another question that we were asked to discuss was what gives us the authority to trim on our system? We have, there are state requirements, there are statutes, state law, that requires us to run our system in such a way that provides safe, adequate, and sufficient service. And part of what we have to do in order to provide that safe, reliable electricity is to perform various maintenance activities, including vegetative management and line clearing of our service, of our of our system. We also have the general terms and conditions that all of our customers agree to when they accept service from the utility, which provide for us the rights to, there's the the slide search, so I would be, this would be on slide number four. Okay, thank you. Without reading our general terms and conditions, what it provides us for is the right to maintain our system to provide safe and adequate service to our customers, as well as other customers served by those facilities that are on our property owners, on our customers' property, as well as on state and municipal right-of-ways. And along that, with the maintenance of that system goes the line clearing and vegetative management program. On the next slide, you'll see what goes into part of what we achieve by doing this process. So part of, one of our priorities, as I mentioned before, was to provide customer service. And part of that customer service is a reliable system. We are, we are mandated to provide reliable electric service. And this chart shows one of the metrics that we use to measure our reliability. And as you can see, over the past twenty years, one of those metrics has improved. That SADY number, what that means is the average number of minutes that a customer, that your average customer, has been out during a year. And so over the past twenty years, we've improved from one hundred and forty-six minutes to ninety-one minutes. Now, that's your average customer. Certainly, there are some customers who have experienced different things, both better and in in some cases worse. So that's one of the ways we measure how well we're able to provide reliability to our customers. On the following slide, we go into some of the ways we communicate with the customers and with the community. And one of the things that we do is we meet with city staff at the end of each year, and we review all upcoming tree trimming, line clearing programs that we have and and which neighborhoods we're going to be performing those activities and in which neighborhoods we're going to be performing major construction. In the January of the following year, the city, city staff will host a public meeting, invite all the neighbors that are affected by those activities. We will attend those meetings and speak with any customers, any residents who have any concerns who attend the meeting. We also will send postcards and emails to property owners weeks prior to beginning work, and we'll meet with those customers. Any customer who wants to discuss an issue, when they contact us, we will go with them at their request to their property to talk about any issue they have related to either our construction process or our line clearing program. And we meet with those customers every single day, including today or most of the day leading up to this meeting. And we communicate, we have an ongoing process where our foresters and our operations personnel are communicating with city staff about both of those activities, but especially about our line clearing program. And we will communicate both with city staff and again back to customers and make sure both parties are aware of any issues along the way. The following slide kind of highlights a couple of points, reiterates some points. Again, we safeguard our system, and what we mean by safeguarding is both to make it resilient so that we can provide reliable service, but also make it safe for both us, our employees, and the public. We have to do that to provide reliable service. It gives us the ability to provide for faster restoration during outages, including storms, increase the safety for our employees and the general public. We follow industry standards for the health of the tree. Now, that's one of the things that was asked about as well. Why do we follow ANSI standards? We follow ANSI A three hundred standards. Those promote the directional pruning methods to minimize pruning stress, focus on the tree health while obtaining necessary clearance from power lines. One of the reasons we follow those ANSI standards is because we're obligated to, through an agreement that we have with the city of Columbia that was signed in two thousand and eleven. That is also yet another, that that agreement that that we had in two thousand and eleven is is another reason we're able to to trim the trees, to prune the trees, to perform our line clearing activities. All right, the following slide shows our tree trimming clearance. And while it probably would take too long to go into all aspects of those clearances, you can review those as as necessary. Those are the standards that we utilize, and it and it goes to the fact that we do have a particular standard that we're trying to achieve, that we're trying to make sure that we provide for adequate clearances from our power lines, again to promote safety, again to promote reliability. And we have a a standard that we are, we go by on a uniform basis across our service territory. The final slide on the presentation, which is the next one, it shows a tree, and this tree has actually come up in some some of the emails that we've seen. And and the point of this was, I think in some places, we saw that that Dominion Energy, after they had acquired SCANA or SENG, had changed the tree trimming, the pruning, the line clearing practices to a greater clearance standard, and that's not the case. That tree, it was trimmed in two thousand and sixteen and was trimmed again in two thousand and twenty-one. And as you can see, the same limbs are clear. We've cleared to the same extent in both pictures. So the the clearance requirements have not changed. We're still following the ANSI A three hundred standard, and and nothing's changed there. There were a few additional questions, I believe. There was a question about undergrounding lines, and that is certainly some certainly an option. And we have worked with city staff, and and actually, the city of Columbia has taken a a very proactive approach to undergrounding power lines within the city limits. As a matter of fact, they've done a much more undergrounding of power lines than any other municipality in our territory, including, you're probably familiar with some of the projects, North Main Street, Gervais Street, Lady Street, the Five Points area, probably about fifteen years ago, and then more recently, Washington Street. They've just been a very proactive approach in areas that, in my opinion, achieve the largest amount of, for the most people get the most amount of benefit out of all of the efforts that the city has put in to take advantage of our non-standard service fund and and use those funds to put lines underground. So in my opinion, the city has taken great advantage of that opportunity, and it's still out there. And we certainly would consider continuing to to partner with the city on that. Also, the the question came up about utilizing herbicides in backyards. We do. We do utilize those, and the intent there is to spray low-lying vegetation with the, with the intent of not having to come back and perform line clearing activities in the future to limit the amount of time and amount of, uh, impact to our customers. And to, again, just promote the clearances that we require and make sure that we're going to be able to maintain those rights of way to provide safe, reliable service, because that's what it's all about. And that, that concludes our planned presentation. And I thank you for your time and for the opportunity to present this, and I thank you for everything you do in our community.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of questions.
Please, Mr. Brennan, then Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shannon, I appreciate your team putting this presentation together at our request. I am, and I guess Dominion is not too new to the area, but pretty new. And so as you take over the SENG, I guess, role for our energy provider, would love to see a new approach to how you do maintenance of our, of our wonderful tree canopy. And a Google search will pull up that, I think we're 41 years, Howard, 42 years in a row of Tree City USA.
Number one in South Carolina.
Okay, there you go. And all the, all the components that are in place for us to, to meet that expectation our residents want every year for our, our healthy tree canopy. If you read them, sound urban forestry management, maintaining a tree board for department, having a community tree ordinance. And the fourth one is Dollar Capita for Urban Forestry. I, I want to point out the Sound Urban Forestry Management is very important. And to take that to another layer, we at the city forestry department can only do so much if, if, if we don't have a good partner that goes the extra mile. So my hope is that now that Dominion is our energy provider, you will continue to, to go that extra mile for us. We have, I've, I've also Google searched some of your operations with municipalities in Virginia, and have seen the give and take, how you work with municipalities up there when it comes to the cutting of their, 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 their treasured trees. You know, we have some very old trees in our old neighborhoods throughout this city. We're, we're very lucky to have that. So, so carrying that approach forward is something that I would like city staff to work with y'all on. You mentioned 2011 was our last agreement with you. I know we have an agreement being negotiated now with you on a future energy use with y'all and rates. I'd like to ask city staff to please take in mind, moving forward, the wonderful points that the residents from all over the City of Columbia made to how we could do a better job at maintaining our tree canopy when it comes to this important maintenance of our power lines. Don't get me wrong, I, I, I understand the importance of, of being connected to the grid and, and not getting offline, but the give and take is what we're looking for here. And I'm sure that John might have provided you with the, the wonderful ideas, approaches that our residents have put forward that we hope you consider when it comes to our rate negotiation with you. Instead of five years, why don't we cut that timeline down to one or two years when it comes to special older age trees? And of course, undergrounding lines and, and, and special areas with special tree canopies is something we would like to talk to you about. Residents for some great ideas that we hope staff brings to you, that they will bring to you as we talk about our new purchase agreement with you.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes, John, let me just say a word of thanks to all, all of what you've done to you guys and the whole team, of course. You've availed yourself in making sure our trees are manicured. Let me ask you a question, because I think what I've seen in the area that I serve are trees that have been, for, for lack of a better word, butchered. We talk about safety issues, and of course, you maintain the lines and you make sure that those safety issues are, are, are applied. I had our tree person from Sarah to come and visit two sites, three sites, actually, particularly the one on, the one on Forest Drive where you have a large branch. And I'm not just exaggerating, a large branch, three branches actually on Forest Drive that could potentially become a hazard, a, a safety issue. You have trees in the Lion Street community, and of course, Sarah has seen those trees. And it's regrettable that the manicuring of those trees were done in such a way that you've got large, huge limbs hanging over the street portion. I think that's McPadden Street. But it's really, it looks dangerous. So it's not what you all have done, because I think you all have done a good job. But in some areas, those trees, in my estimation, have been butchered. And I need to understand why and how those majestic trees and the limbs hanging over the tree, over the street that could supposedly purposely cause a real hazard if something were to hit those limbs.
Yes, sir, Councilman McDowell, we would, I can't speak to those particular trees because I'm not familiar with exactly the ones you're talking about. But we will certainly be happy to meet with city staff to address any tree issues, as we always are, and, and get an answer. And if it's something that we can do to help ameliorate any safety issue with that, then, then certainly we'll take that into consideration and see what we can do to help and absolutely get an answer back to you as quickly as possible.
Please do. I spoke with Sarah, actually I met with Sarah, it's almost been a month ago. And of course, her intent was to be in touch with you all because the president of the Lion Street community has also complained. I don't know whether or not they complained to Dominion, but Chase Tola, who's our new pres, our new president, a president-elect, called it to my attention. The trees on Forest Drive represents that, 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 that breezeway where three trees, huge trees, are hanging on side of the road, not on side of the road, in the street, which could possibly pose a real, so please, I would ask that you be in touch with Sarah, Sarah has seen this. And of course, we need to understand if something could be realistically done to trim those trees back so that it does not pose a pedestrian or vehicular accident.
Absolutely, we'll reach out to Sarah and make sure we understand the situation and the location and the trees involved.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Duval and Mr. Rickman?
John and Royce, thank y'all for coming, and I second what Councilman McDowell said. I think one of the ways that Dominion could help us is to educate the tree cutters, not just to go 20 feet, but you might need to go 18 feet sometime to get to a place on the tree where it's legitimate to cut, or might need to go 22 feet to, to make it cut. But what I see out there are, are just people that are told, cut these things 20 feet back from the transmission line, and it doesn't matter where that 20 foot falls, you're going to cut it. Sometimes you see it's a legitimate cut at a joint on the tree, but a lot of times you see a massive trunk, a 10-foot, you know, 10-inch trunk.
Put it on the calendar for me?
Just.
Sorry, guys, sorry, Howard.
Just cut off at the 20-foot level. If, if they would have a little bit more common sense to know that the public's watching and do sensible cuts, it would help a lot. The other thing I, I wish you would explain to the citizens of the City of Columbia is how little authority the City of Columbia has over the operations of Dominion and your power, your ability to cut. Do we have anything in our arsenal other than telling John how nice he is all the time and asking him to help us when we need to?
Well, I'll, I'll let John comment on how, how much he wants to be praised, and if you have any other things in your arsenal beyond that. But I will say that to your, your first comments, where we have made errors, and, and certainly, you know, I, I know that we're not always going to, we're not going to have zero mistakes. But when we make errors, we certainly meet with city staff to make sure those cuts are achieved. And we, that is the intent, that is the standard, which is that we cut back to leaders. We, we cut to a certain distance, but that we make proper cuts, which it does exactly the way you described it, Councilman Duval, which would be to cut back beyond that 20 feet or that 10 feet in certain situations to make a proper cut, to promote both the health of the tree as well as the directional growing, to limit the pruning in the future. So that's the intent, that's the specification, that's what we're going to continue to do. But if we fail to do that, then we want to meet with the City of Columbia. We want to meet with city staff and, and rectify the situation to what extent it can be and not do it in the future. So we want to be called out on those issues where the spec is.
Walk down Park Street and walk down Pendleton Street and walk down Forest Drive and look.
Yes, sir, I, I believe the area on Park Street between Lady and Gervais might be what you're referring to. So those trees were cut directly underneath transmission power lines. That falls outside of my scope as being the, the distribution operator in, in Columbia, and it falls under FERC jurisdiction. It falls outside of the City of Columbia tree agreement that we have. We have to handle those transmission lines in a different manner due to federal jurisdiction over maintaining the, the transmission grid. And, and the same thing happened there on Pendleton Street, which was referenced in many of the emails, which is getting somewhat confused with our line clearing program, which is what we have a, a tree agreement with the City of Columbia on.
Councilman McDowell, this is John Cadena, just to kind of reiterate your, your comment. Yes, we, we are governed by FERC on a lot of the tree trimming issues. We're also governed by the South Carolina Public Service Commission. So you're correct in saying that the, the city doesn't have regulatory authority over the tree trimming.
Mr. Rickman.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for getting on and echo some of Will's comments. I think the other thing, you know, as we're moving forward on a franchise agreement, I do think that we have the ability to put in there a process about training on the tree trimming and also putting in a process about where lines are going and how it's been maintained. I do think that is in our purview to put our own type of regulatory system based on our franchise agreement. And that's something we may need to work out, because there needs to be a balance, as we all know. Because the one thing we don't want to do is create an opportunity where we don't have power for our residents, but at the same time, we don't want to see what we've seen lately. And a lot of that has to do with who the, the tree trimmer is, the training and the requirements, and their contract should reflect those that are ours. So I do think we have an opportunity to work with Dominion on that, and I hope we will as we move forward.
If, if I could kind of address a couple of those comments, the 2011 tree trimming agreement does have training requirements. So, you know, we, we do train our tree trimmers. The city also communicates with our tree trimmers. And some of the issues, I received an email earlier today. Some of those issues are actually already addressed in the tree trimming agreement to include the trimming more frequently. That is already addressed in the tree trimming agreement. Absolutely, we're willing to sit down and, and, and talk with y'all further.
And Mr. McDowell, you were about to say something before Daniel starts.
Thank you very much. John, look, I'm appreciative for all you do in terms of tree trimming. My, my reservation is simply this. I think in collaboration with, with Sarah, our person who looks at our trees and the, and the, and the camouflage, and, and the canopy that's there, I think there needs to be some collaboration on how those trees are trimmed, the appearance of those things, and the possible safety issues when you've got large branches hanging over the tree, which could very well pose a real problem if something were to happen. And this, and those trees are not, I mean, they are not impeding lives. They are just hanging over the street. So I think an observation of those trees could very well benefit this conversation in terms of the training of tree trimmers and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
I understand, Councilman McDowell.
Thank you, guys, and, and the team. We can always, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine, please.
Just one thing, and this might be more for Erica. This is a long meeting for somebody to watch the whole thing. I wonder if we can take this presentation and cut it out, and we can provide that on our station or on our YouTube. And then I was wondering if John and Royce and maybe they could do, let our folks interview them. I, I think that there's a lot of angst about what happens with the tree trimming. And I think to be able to provide as much data, I know you say you had the meetings and you email out, but until it happens in, in your neighborhood, people are probably not paying attention to coming to those meetings. So I think if we can just push for more transparency and information to the public, that will be helpful.
Absolutely, we'll do that. And just to let you know, we do have videos on our website. We can make sure that the city has access to those and can put them on their website. It describes the entire process of line clearing, and I think would be very helpful. So we'd be glad to do that.
Yeah. The.
And I'm sure Lisa's watching, but we'll make sure that we all connect.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am clerk. Yeah, and I think everyone understands the importance of, of having an efficient, safe system and reliable system, obviously, is, is paramount. We just know that the, the ability sometimes to ensure a beautiful and robust and safe and sovereign environment that allows us to cool these famously hot streets in the summer and maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods is so important. So I think what you hear undercurrent from council is obviously, let's have as much, as soon, as much as we can from the public side and the private side. We can put some of that information on our website on channel two, and certainly question it from our social media channels so that people are aware. But let's just make sure we also have some serious synchronicity and dialogue with our forestry beautification staff that does really good work to, to make sure, John, to you guys, make sure that we're, we're doing everything we can to, to avoid the situations that can be avoided when they can. And I know we all work hard, we, we can always do better. Let's, let's see if, how we can all do better, and, and certainly, I agree with, with Daniel, know this, obviously, as, as we work our way through the franchise agreement, we don't get, we don't get a bite at Apple all the time. There are a whole lot of major issues, including some others I know that staff has already been talking to you guys about. And that we look forward to resolving that will benefit the city for a long time. So, thank you, guys. Let's, let's, let's find ways to push this out as much as possible, with as many citizens as possible. Really appreciate your time today.
Thanks for your time, Mayor.
All right, you be well.
Ned Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am.
Ensure that city PR will reach out to Dominion Communications Team, and we also work with Clint and his staff to make sure we get the information out.
All right, thank you, dear, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Palin?
Yes, sir. Next up is councils asked to consider and approve the consent agenda. That is items six through 13.
Is there a motion?
Move approval of consent agenda, item six through 13.
Is there a second? Second, in discussion, with the previous question, Kirk Callowell.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
All right. Now, that's the pace we want to see. So item 14.
You used, you used to have a reputation for really fast meetings, Palin. It's out the window right now.
I know, it's gone.
Your entire reputation is gone.
It's, it's toast. It has to all average out. That's what it is. Um, next up, we have our zoning planning ordinance. This is our second reading, item 14, Unified Development Ordinance, adoption of new city of Columbia zoning map.
I move approval of the Unified Development Ordinance, the new zoning map for the city of Columbia.
Second the motion. Any discussion with the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next, next section of the agenda is our ordinance first reading, item number 15, ordinance number 2021 dash 051, approving the use of certain funds of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, in order to acquire, construct, equip and develop land and improvements within the Bull Street development, provide one or more parking facilities and pay certain costs associated with development thereof and other matters related there to Bull Street Parking Facility to construction and development.
Move approval. Move, Mr. McDowell, second the motion. Question. Move the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
I continue to be excited about Bull Street progress. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number 16 is resolution number R 2021 dash 052, authorizing the city manager to execute a parking facility to development agreement between the city of Columbia and Bull Street Development LLC.
So move.
Second, in discussion. Move the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item number 17, resolution number R 2021 dash 060, authorizing the acceptance of a quick claim deed from the South Carolina Department of Transportation for approximately point 63 acre parcel A containing approximately point 2 acre and parcel B containing approximately point 35 acre near Hartford Street and South Carolina Route 277 and identified as.
Move, is there a second?
Okay.
Question. Move the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item number 18, resolution number R 2021 dash 063, amending resolution number R 2020 dash 058, certifying building sites as an abandoned building pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 12 dash 67 dash 100 of the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976 as amended regarding property located at 1310 Lady Street, Richland County, TMS number 11401 dash 03 dash 01. This is the old Keenan.
Wait for Mr. Palin to get to the end. This is the old Keenan building at some turn Lady Street.
All right.
Second motion, um, in discussion with the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we vote against the next resolution, resolution there, that means that we don't have an election and can keep the team in place.
It, 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 it means something. I don't, I don't know what it means, uh, but I can tell you somebody on this team is going to be leaving come December 31st. At least, at least one of us.
Okay.
I did, I did just read it. I think you also, North Carolina kicked the elections back, uh, into the, into the spring. So it's going to be interesting around the country how people deal with elections. Mr. Palin.
Item 19, resolution number R 2021 dash 072, authorizing notice of 2021 election for mayor and council members from District One, District One at large.
Motion. Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Uh, we'll move the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 20, resolution number R 2021 dash 073, launch and implementation of CLIMB, C L I M B, guaranteed income pilot project.
With approval.
Okay.
Discussion. Remove the previous question. Rickaman, please.
Yeah. Do you mind just reminding people about how the program came along?
Sure.
Because it's been a while since you talked about it.
Sure. It's a national effort, um, part of the mayor, mayor's for guaranteed, uh, income, um, uh, effort started with the Stockton Seed, uh, program, uh, uh, using cities across the country, um, almost all exclusively like the model here in Columbia, using private sector money, uh, to show, uh, that, um, particularly when folks are, are, are living, uh, below 80% AMI and, and sometimes below 60% AMI, and if in fact you give them an income floor, uh, that, um, folks use those resources and use them very effectively. It's interesting. A lot of folks will look at the, um, federal government's largesse over the last year or so, uh, as, as some evidence of, of, of that Stockton Seed Program produced some serious, uh, and impressive results as to how those resources have been used. And, uh, we are using, um, a significant sum of money, uh, north of $600,000, all given philanthropically, most of it from Jack Dorsey, uh, founder of, of, of Twitter. Uh, we've engaged the Central Carolina Community Foundation as a custodian of those resources and we're working closely with the Midlands Fathers Initiative, uh, that, and many of us have been very impressed with their work of the last few decades as an opportunity to work side by side, uh, with, um, a number of fathers, 100 fathers. Uh, again, all these funds, uh, provided, uh, by the private sector, uh, and seeing if we can help these, um, men stabilize their lives, improve their relationships with their, with their, with, with their children. And, um, and, well, we've engaged a, a very data-driven approach that actually issues, um, a debit card that reloads every, every single month. So we'll also be able to do some anonymized, uh, tracking, uh, of how those funds are, are used. Uh, but, uh, this is with no public money, uh, wonderful public-private philanthropic partnership. I'm excited to, uh, to, to get started.
Good.
All right. Ms. Devine, if you, if you back on you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, um, just echo what you said about the, the data. I know there's a lot of misinformation that people put out there about guaranteed, um, income programs and how the money is going to be spent. The data is, is really telling and, and, and maybe, um, at a later date or, or somehow you can put out the data. I know y'all who keep tracking data on the climb, but even the data that's out there now, so that people will understand that this is certainly a, a worthwhile program and as a pilot should certainly be looked at, how do we expand, um, once we have our own data?
And, and it's, uh, and this is, and I won't, uh, belabor the point, and that we have to get, uh, through the rest of the agenda. Uh, this is, uh, in the wake of a, a great deal of work we've done over the last several years, meaning you've been involved with some of the work we did with the Aspen Institute and the epic program around income volatility, uh, recognizing the challenges that we face now as people, uh, as we all move into, uh, a, a very interesting world where AI and automation and advanced machine learning, particularly advanced manufacturing in places like South Carolina, has really, over the last several decades, um, actually destabilized a number of, of families who live, again, in the two bottom quintiles of American economic society, people who work hard, who, 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 who work jobs, who sometimes work multiple jobs and still can't, uh, make ends meet. Uh, what's the role that we have in a, in a civilized society, making sure that people, um, can live with, uh, with dignity and that we play a role in helping them, uh, once again provide those ladders that my parents had and, and, and their parents had to differently before them. Um, it's a different way, uh, uh, of, of doing things. Um, um, but I, I, I like being in the vanguard in this way of, uh, of seeing how we might be able to improve some people's lives and, and particularly, I know it's important to all of us on, on, on this call, um, particularly the, the fathers and, and the mother, uh, if we can improve people's lives, uh, and relationships with the kids. I think that's, that's an added, uh, insignificant value that the Midlands Father Initiative is this effort, which is unique. Uh, others' programs have focused on mothers and, and people in different spaces. Uh, this is the only effort that I know of in the country, uh, that's focused on fathers and, and, and creating strong bonds between fathers and their children. Any other questions? We'll move the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Excellent. Our next, uh, section is event resolutions. Uh, before we go there, I just wanted to make a quick comment. It has occurred to me, uh, as y'all had passed, uh, item number 19 for the, uh, elections, that this might be my last opportunity over the next few months to have all seven of y'all on here. So I just want to, uh, I know there'll be change. Change is inevitable. Change can be good, but boy, for all of y'all, the last two and the last four years, which covers everyone on their terms, it's been a great working relationship between y'all and staff. Uh, I've learned a lot from y'all as well as I go through this. So, since, uh, Ms. Wilson will be back soon, um, I needed to put that out there for y'all and I want to thank y'all.
And you've done an amazing, amazing job, Jeff. Amazing job. So thank you, brother.
Yes, sir. So item 21.
Especially because I know it's really meant for me and you just said it.
So, uh, item number 21, resolution number R 2021 dash 034, authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the lifting as we claim fund right, lifting as we climb fundraiser on Main Street on Saturday, September 18th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion with the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. Thank you.
And the lifting as we clean fundraiser will be the next morning. Item number 22, resolution number R 2021 dash 065, authorizing consumption of beer and wine only within Boyd Plaza adjacent to the Columbia Museum Art for CMA Underground on Thursday, July 29th, 2021.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Next up, we have appointments. Uh, item 23 is the Climate Protection Action Committee, and I believe Ashley, Ms. Jenk, Ms. Jenkins is on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Duval.
Uh, under item 24, the Columbia Tree and Appearance Commission, uh, Judge Catherine Kennedy wanted, uh, she has her application in. It didn't make the deadline for this particular meeting, and I would like to defer item 24 until the next meeting.
I agree with Howard on this.
All right. Um, I think, I think, and I think Ashley wanted to hold on, on 23 as well. So we're going to hold all appointments for right now.
Sounds like a deal.
Ashley, Ashley, you get, get your life back for right now.
It's been, it's been good. I just want to make sure we get this situated the way, um, the second committee needs it. So.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 25 is a public hearing, reauthorization of the City Center Improvement District. Mr. Matt Kennel, president and CEO of City Center Partnership.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, Mayor Benjamin, uh, honorable members of council, uh, and, uh, Jeff Palin, it's, it's a pleasure to work with all of you, but as you know, uh, we are moving along, uh, with the reauthorization, uh, for the continuation of the City Center Business Improvement District. As you may remember, back on May 18th, uh, city council approved a resolution of intent, uh, to renew, uh, to continue the Business Improvement District. Uh, we ran, uh, advertisements, uh, for the public's, uh, good, uh, on both May 27th and June 3rd in the state newspaper, um, that there was going to be a public hearing today on the reauthorization of that district. Um, again, what we're doing is we're simply asking, uh, the public and the property owners downtown and city council ultimately, uh, to allow us to continue what we've been doing, uh, for about 20 years, uh, to provide services and recruit and retain businesses, uh, to the downtown, uh, Business Improvement District area. Uh, we do have a, uh, 10-year plan, uh, of what we'll do for the next 10 years, which has been, uh, on our website, uh, per the advertisement in the state newspaper. And of course, we can get copies to anybody that needs that, that has not seen it on our website, and, and that was in the, in the ad as well. But, uh, today, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the clerk, we're just asking that, uh, we have a public hearing and see if the public would like to comment.
Hey, thank you, Matt. Uh, excited about moving forward with this. Erica, do we have anyone who signed up to speak, uh, on the public hearing on this issue?
Okay, Mayor, we do not have anyone who has called in to speak, but we have received two, uh, messages in the meeting portal and I believe three emails, all of which appear to be very brief. Uh, we'd like to read those into the record at this time.
Okay. Please.
Received a message from, uh, attorney Tommy Lavender. I will not be able to attend today's meeting. However, I would like to note my support of continuing the efforts of the CCP and what it does for downtown. While I am no longer a Main Street property owner, I continue to work downtown in our Main Street office every day and observe the tireless efforts of the dedicated yellow shirts. They are always busy, but also always friendly. I urge extension of the bid. Tommy Lavender. Ms. Jennifer Harding says, I work in downtown Columbia and would like to express my support of continuing the efforts of the City Center Partnership. This program has certainly contributed to the success of our revitalized downtown area. Best wishes, Jennifer Harding, vice president for business solutions, leading real estate companies of the world. Jerry Whitley, city council members. I am a resident of Columbia, but do not currently work downtown. However, I've been a member of the Capital City Club since its inception over 30 years ago and have seen the vast improvement of Main Street's appearance. I have walked and jogged Main Street for the last several years, and it's evident that Matt Kennel and his team are partially responsible for helping to turn an eyesore into a downtown vibrant city. The yellow shirt team members are friendly and efficient, and I highly recommend city The Yellow Shirt Team members are friendly and efficient and I highly recommend City Council reauthorize the City Center District. Thank you sincerely, Jerry Whitley, Columbia resident. And we have, uh, a message from Jeremy DeCraff. He is the General Manager of the Mass General Store located at sixteen oh one Main Street. I am speaking by proxy for Lisa Cooper and the Cooper family, who are the founders of the company. Back in oh nine, ten, when the Mass General Store was looking at opening up its nine store location, the Coopers were trying to narrow down the potential locations to one hundred ninety communities that had reached out to the company wanting Mass to come to their town. Through all of that, Mass decided on Columbia. One of the driving factors that had the company decide on Columbia as its next location was the fact that the downtown area was a bid and that it was managed by such a well-run organization such as the City Center Partnership. The Clean and Safe Program focused on business development and the potential growth or residential living made downtown Columbia an exciting place to open our doors. Over the past ten years, since we have opened, we have seen Main Street transform from a place that people avoided to a place that is thriving with businesses, restaurants and culture. This would not have been, this would not have happened without the leadership of Matt Kennel and his team at the CCP. Over the past fifteen years, the country had faced one of the most challenging economic crises in our nation's history and, uh, that was fifteen months. As we began to rise out of that uncertainty, it is even more important that the CCP's request to renew the bid for another ten years is approved. The services the CCP offers and its ability to be a liaison to the property owners and business businesses as well as the potential businesses that are interested in locating to the Main Street District. The Mass General Store strongly supports the renewal of the bid for another ten years. The last comment, I am Ted Elsie with Cantina Seventy Six on Main Street. I cannot emphasize enough how important Matt Kennel and his team at CCP have been to the success of our restaurants. The development of Main Street, including streetscaping, business recruitment, support, cleanliness, insecurity has led to an amazing new district in the heart of Columbia. The Yellow Shirts have been critical to the safety and security of Main Street. I am not sure we would be in business without their presence. We would certainly need to hire private security to protect our, to protect our staff and customers. Cantina Seventy Six fully supports the renewal of the bid for another ten years. And that concludes the public input at this time.
Thank you. Have we had anyone else sign up since we started, Erica? All right. If, uh, if not, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Okay.
All right, fantastic. Um, any, um, discussion from council? I, 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 I second every single, uh, thing said, uh, Matt, uh, when, when they opened up with Tommy Lavender, you almost lost me. Uh, but I, you can't start with a big Clemson guy at the, at the front, uh, there. But seriously, I think that the Yellow Shirts and, um, and CCP, um, they are the kind of physical manifestation we see all day long. It's not all that you guys do, uh, the thought leadership, um, the, everything, just, just advocating, um, for the, um, uh, the businesses and the individuals and now the residents in downtown. Did amazing, you did an amazing job. Just want to say thank you for that. And, um, uh, I, I think, um, Mr. McDowell, obviously, uh.
I move, I move reauthorization of the Columbia City Partnership.
And I, and I'll second that and then we'll go to Ms., uh, Ms. Divine, if she had a hand, Ms. Divine, please.
Yes, sir. Um, I just wanted to, um, thank Matt and the whole CCP team. I'm, I'm fully supportive of, uh, the reauthorization and the bid has really done a tremendous, uh, work, not just on Main Street, but just the epitome of, of Columbia. When people visit our town, um, the hospitality of the, the shirts and the safety, uh, that they give, um, is, is beyond measure. But I also just want to share, um, and you guys know, especially lately, I've talked about this a lot in, in my interactions with, with clients and others that are experiencing mental health challenges, um, in our city. And I will tell you that, um, Matt and Yellow Shirts are a lot of times our frontline, uh, to, uh, noticing issues and being able to work with the, the requisite, um, agencies to get help. And so there's a lot that, that the CCP does that people don't see on a regular basis. Uh, but I want to thank Matt for, for what you guys do, um, and I, I, I think it's just probably one of the best things we've done for downtown.
You, Mr. Rickman.
Uh, I too want to, I too want to thank Matt. Uh, I met with Matt and his, uh, Chairman of the Board and other members about restructuring as part of moving forward, to get more of the property owners involved. And Matt and them jumped on the opportunity, which is where we are at this stage and continue to grow. And I hope the, the next ten years are even better than the first ten years. And Matt, thank you for listening and, and making changes and getting people involved.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move the previous question. Kurt Colorado.
I apologize. Who, we have seconds of motion?
I did, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Hi.
Mr. Vine.
Hi.
Mr. David. Mayor Benjamin.
Hi. And procedurally, is that a, uh, that's, is that one vote or two votes? Are we done? Is, is that it? We good to go? Uh, we just had to, I'm not even sure we had to have another vote, to be honest with you. There was a public hearing. Uh, was this come back before? So we good?
I, I believe there's a thing of the ordinance, uh, but I'm not sure there needs to be another public.
Okay.
All right. This is the public hearing. The next step would be bringing the ordinance back.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure we actually had to have a vote right now, but we did. We got a good sense of the body. So it's like, we got.
Thank you very much.
Cause we got met the hot seat. Uh, I, I do want to make a play. We do need some more H stacks, wanted to go to the CCP, but we'll talk more about that later.
Please, thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody.
Any, uh, reports or referrals to, uh, committees, reports on, or referrals to committee? All right. Uh, any other, uh, additional public input? Um, anyone else we need to forward to Mr. Shealy?
We have Hal Stevenson on the line.
Please.
And an, an additional caller that has not been identified.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I was, uh, recruited by my colleagues down here in the Vista to come to the meeting and I got to listen to all that wonderful stuff, but I'm here to just speak briefly about trees. Um, a couple of our guys down here in the Vista have been, you know, talking for some time and I think they've let Missy and Robert maybe know about this, but with the Dominion issue with the trees being cut and how that was done, we, we have some folks that, that feel like there are some places where there's trees that actually need to be trimmed now that aren't a part of that and there's safety concerns around that. And I wanted to bring that, you know, to y'all's attention and listening to the, uh, commentary from, uh, Dominion. Um, you know, th- this is nothing new. We've, we've, you know, dealt with issues before, but now with Dominion in charge, we're hopeful that there'll be maybe some better communication. Um, I'll follow up with, with John Cadena, uh, some, uh, about some of those issues that may have, you know, these particular trees that everybody's been up in arms down here. But, um, we'd really like y'all to focus on that a bit for us down here. You know, I serve as the president of a property owners group, um, we put together and I also serve on the board of the Vista Guild, try to have voices on both sides of that. And I just wanted to be here and let you guys know that, that, that we want to pick up the pace and talk about the trees down here a little bit more. Uh, I think one of our guys is meeting with, with Caleb King. I know Sarah, I don't know how Sarah and Caleb, um, how, how their, um, titles or who's in charge of who, but he is coming down here on Monday and wanted to take the opportunity to raise it, you know, to y'all's level, to be paying attention about it. And we'll start with Caleb, um, and just want to make sure you guys knew that, that we were going to get engaged on this and want to, want to see it for safety reasons, aesthetic reasons, um, being able to take advantage of the lights. Um, and so we'll go through staff to do that, but want to raise it to y'all's attention at this time.
Thank, thank you, Hal.
Well.
All right, who else we have, Erica?
The other caller has disconnected, so that would end, um, all of the callers there.
All right. Thank you. Very much. Um, Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to SC Code thirty dash four day seventy eight two COVID nineteen, city holidays, Booker Washington Heights. Receipt of legal advice related to a pending threat or potential claim pursuant to SC Code thirty dash four day seventy eight two. Uh, John Richard Paylon, Palant, as conservator for Jean Palant, uh, versus the City of Columbia. A discussion of matters related to proposed location expansion or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body pursuant to SC Code thirty dash four day seventy eight two. Van Robotics and discussion of matters of employment of an employee according to SC Code thirty dash four day seventy eight two.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. So second.
Second.
Question, with the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman. Mr. McDowell.
You have muted.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Hi.
Mr. Vine.
Hi.
Mr. David.
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin.
Hi. I'm not sure Mr. Rickman's on mute if he, if he had to leave, but, um.
He said he was losing his battery. He may have to lose.
Okay. Everyone, thank you so much for joining us today. Um, Madam Clark, who's that?